Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 25th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand for invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Father God, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this great people of Lynchburg. Thank you, Father, and I ask that you give us a sweet spirit to guide us through this evening, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which stands one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for the very last agenda item to begin broadcasting, live streaming, our committee meetings.
Any discussion?
I just think it would be good for the public to be able to see what happens in these committee meetings out in the open. We currently broadcast and livestream our work sessions, our council meetings, our school board meetings, our joint meetings. I think that it would be good transparency. It would be good for our citizens to be able to witness what happens in our committee meetings as it happens.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I agree. I think I had talked to staff about this a few weeks ago. The equipment is there. I don't know if it's ever been done before, but I certainly like for it to start. I think it's in the interest of open and transparent government. And one of the things I've noticed in my almost 50 years in working in government is the more transparency and the more openness and the more people, the citizens, can see their representatives at work, the more they behave and the more they act in the interest of the citizens. So I would be very much in favor of the, of both committees, both the standing committees, planning as well as the Finance Committee, where a lot of important things take place. And we need to let folks see what's going on.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. Just to the staff, I'll be able to do that, okay? Not any problems, not any challenges?
So, Dr. Wilder, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. We, as Mr. Deemer, excuse me, Vice Deemer, Vice Steemer? Vice Mayor Deemer, let me stop, let me, let me stop saying so fast. Did ask this question, and we do have the element or equipment in the room that we usually normally meet, meet in. I would be, I haven't really engaged Philip and Shaquille, who are the ones that will be principally impacted by this. I don't suspect that it'll be an issue per se as far as connectivity of there's a wave given to the, to the staff back. So, thank you, Ms. Timmer. So, to answer your question, Dr. Wilder, we can. What I'd ask for is maybe a bit of a grace period to get through. We're in February, no, are we in February? Yeah, can we, the next one's PD, Physical Development Committee. While we prepare and get things ready, maybe start fresh in March, just so that we're aware of what the implications are and that we're ready to go. If we're, you know, we're there, we're there. But I'm sitting here right now, don't know of anything that would, you know, prevent us from doing so. It just, maybe give staff just a little bit of time, a little bit of grace to make sure that we're all ready to go when it comes time.
Okay. Yes, sir. I think it's an excellent idea. And I think much more transparency, the best as possible.
Sure.
I would think our community needs to see what's going on in our committee meetings as well. Whether shenanigans or whatever's going on, our committee members, our community can see that for themselves. And sometimes, sometimes deals come before I get there. So we can see all of that, I can call it out, we can call it out. So I appreciate that idea. I think we need to be as transparent as possible to let our community members see what is going on. Because, let me stop, thank you.
Mr. Feraldi?
That's important concept. I would point us to our rules of procedure. We're strategically designed to prevent any surprise motions happening at the seven o'clock meeting and that we should be able to vet items before they're considered here. So I would support the manager's request and point us to our precedence that has been set regarding matters taken over at our seven o'clock meeting. So with that, I do support the, the concept. I would ask my consensus. We, A, pursue this with the intent that it's adopted, and B, that we give the staff the time to implement it. If we can consent to it, we don't have to go through the rigmarole of a substitute motion or amended motion, but I stand ready to do that if needed.
Ms. Timmer?
I'm in favor of the motion and I respect Councilmember Feraldi's remarks. My thoughts with it is just the timeframe and the budget season because it is such a contentious conversation that it would be very valuable to implement this sooner than later in light of the budget. And so I wouldn't want there to be unnecessary delays with implementation. I understand that there are different components to that. But if it's something that, that we could generally agree upon and implement rapidly, that would be great. But I don't have.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice?
Yes, sir.
My expectation is as early as the second, the second Tuesday in March, which is, I think, March 11th, thank you, that we'll be ready. And if it's amenable, that we could, I think it would be a very small briefing, but we would brief you during your work session on the 25th on what to expect, and it helps to highlight to our public about when to expect and what to expect and how it's going to work and all of that. So, am I, I'm looking at you, is there like a?
Today's the 25th, so.
Oh, shoot. So we're talking about, okay, okay. I am behind, folks. I apologize. I just, I'm looking for a beat for us to have an opportunity to make sure that Mr. Feraldi's talked with a little bit after Vice Mayor. We talked through it. We do have all the elements or aspects. I just want to make sure that it's seamless for everybody paying attention.
Mr. Missions?
So, if it would be acceptable by consensus of the body to do it, I would be willing to amend my motion to just say by March 25th, I think is the next Finance Committee meeting, and that, that we would be online by then. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Acceptable, certainly acceptable to me, and it would give me the 11th, thank you for reminding what today is, that I'd be able to brief you at the 11th about what to expect on the 25th.
So if we can get consensus on that, I'd be willing to amend, amend the motion.
Hit, nod, everybody.
Sound good?
All right.
Yes, sir.
I don't like making motions and decisions like this that impact as many people. I want it done. I support it. I don't want to tie them, staff down, to a specific date. If they run into reasons, if Shaquille has a vacation coming up in the next month, we won't be able to tie you to the March 25th thing. And so, all I'm trying to say is like.
Thank you.
As expeditiously as possible, I think it's safe to say. But it's just my opinion.
Yes.
So just so we're playing on the record, is this matter, instead of being put on general business for tonight, it's going to come up as a Bib, a briefing, on the 11th by the city manager's staff?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so just to be clear, my motion was to amend the agenda tonight, to put that at the end of this meeting. But what I'm saying is I'm willing to offer a friendly amendment just to adopt this and have it go into effect by March 25th. If that's not what we're going to do, then I stick back with my main motion. That's, that's where we're at.
So motion, no second. If there's consensus on the 25th?
If there's consensus.
I believe we have consensus for the 25th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may offer, it gives us a beat on the 11th that, so I just, Shaquille still is talking to me, so I poked my head in there, it was as good. And, exactly. And, and if there are things that you need to understand about proceed, like Mr. Wilder expected, certain things that I don't know about, right? We can talk about it then and make sure that we're angling for the 25th. And if there's anything that we're not aware of or that we haven't accounted for, I've given us all a certain amount of grace and a certain amount of opportunity to be fully, fully prepared.
Big T transparency.
Cool. Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
With that, moving on. Tonight's City Council Agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. Yes, Mayor?
So during the work session, to recap, there was a vote taken and approved to pull items 16 and 17 from this agenda.
Yes.
So just want to update the viewing audience on that.
Thank you. The first session is Consent Agenda. It includes routine items that can be approved by one, with one vote. May I have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Feraldi?
We're doing it that way? Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
The next session is Public Hearing. These are required by law and directed by council. Procedure: Staff will be, will give a presentation. The public can comment. Individuals have three minutes to speak. They're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. Group speakers must say which group they represent. Each group's get, get one spokesperson. Each speaker must say their name and their locality. After public comments, the public hearing will be closed and rest with council. Item: Consideration of adopting resolution approving goals for the Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, and Homes Program for the next five years, Consolidated Plan, and 2025 Annual Action Plan. Ms. Melva will provide a summary for us.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and Members of City Council. Tonight's City Council is conducting a public hearing to receive the citizen comments regarding the proposed housing and non-housing goals for the development of the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. This plan will cover the time period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2030. The plan will outline the city's needs, goals, and objectives for community development, both in housing and non-housing areas. These goals are intended to provide a broad guidance in the annual allocation over the next five years of the CDBG and Home Program funds granted to the city by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. On January 22nd and 23rd, there were stakeholder meetings, and the Committee Development Advisory Committee conducted a public meeting to hear citizens' comments on the proposed goals. I have with me tonight Mr. Bill Waschulinski, President of Mulligan and Lonnegren, who is the consultant and is assisting city staff with the development of the plan. And he is going to provide an overview of the stakeholder and SEDAC meetings prior to the public hearing. Councilmember Dr. Sterling Wilder and Ms. Jacqueline Timler are Members of the Advisory Committee. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Councilmember Dr. Wilder, as Chairman of SEDAC, will provide a summary of SEDAC's discussion and its recommendation for approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Melva, and thank you, City Council Members. We just have a very brief PowerPoint to provide an overview of the consolidated plan process and what we've discussed and heard through our stakeholder sessions as well as our public meeting. So again, just to reiterate, the purpose and action. The purpose is for us to get, obtain city council approval of the proposed housing and non-housing goals for the 2025 to 2029 CDBG and Home Programs. And the reason is HUD requires us to go out every, every five years to revisit in the community what the high priority needs are within the community. And that's important because we need to be able to identify high priority needs for which the city will use its federal resources to address those needs over the next five years, through 2025 through 2029. So just to give a, provide an overview of the consultation today. As Melva said, in January, we had several workshops, and we had divided them amongst key topics as we're required to do through this consolidated plan process. Our workshops were related to affordable housing, workforce development, housing for the homeless and other special needs populations, and community development. In addition to the workshops, the stakeholder workshops, we also had an online survey in which we obtained general public input on the plan through the survey. And we also had a public needs meeting through the Community Development Advisory Committee. So all of this information was taken together to really identify if there's been any changes to the five-year strategic plan, and if so, where and how we should address those. So just wanted to kind of provide an overview of the things we heard. So these are the key elements that we heard during all these sessions as well as the survey and at the SEDAC meeting. And they're very similar to what we heard five years ago. However, these have been exacerbated over the last five years due to COVID. So there's a need for affordable quality housing for all income levels, and it's insufficient, affordable housing. There's unsheltered population are growing, especially as it relates to emergency beds, and they're needed after the closure of a recent shelter. Landlord education and outreach are encouraged to participation, are encouraged to participate in the rental assistance programs. There's a need to provide how to be a good tenant and homeowner education in order to maintain housing. Financial literacy programs are also needed for all age groups, including in schools. Workforce development is needed to create and fill sustainable wage jobs. And then there's a definite need for sidewalk, streetscape, and other public infrastructure improvements are needed throughout the city. So we broke our proposed goals down into two, two sections, the housing goals as well as the non-housing. And you'll see here, this is a comparison between what was in the 2020 to 2024 strategic plan versus what we're proposing for the 2025 to 2029. As you'll see, they're very similar to what they were five years ago, as I said. The needs have only gotten worse over the last five years in the city as it relates to these things. So the first one is that we're suggesting in terms of our strategic housing goal would be to support initiatives to increase permanent affordable housing in rental markets that increase the number of owner-occupied units and emphasis to be placed on creating affordable units for all incomes. As you see there, we crossed out the mixed-income and inclusive communities. Felt that creating affordable units at all income levels was more appropriate just given what we've heard. Support the preservation of affordable housing in both the rental and sales market, including the rehabilitation of substandard housing, and to support efforts for, for the identification and remediation of rental housing in the substandard condition. Moving on to the non-housing goals, again, we're comparing fiscal, your strategic plan from 2020 to 2024 versus what we're proposing for 2025 to 2029. And again, this are the non-housing community development goals. We're suggesting to support the improvements of public facilities and infrastructure, support efforts for the removal and redevelopment of dilapidated and condemned structures to eliminate neighborhood deterioration, blight and blighting influences, support neighborhood partnerships that facilitate self-sufficiency and enable families and individuals to maintain their housing, remain in their neighborhoods, and age in place. The next one, we've amended slightly, apparently because the city's blueprint for opportunities has expired. That was in place five years ago. So our, we're suggesting to support efforts that align with the goals of the city's economic development plans to improve the economic base, job skills, and health in community. Promote public service activities which support the healthy development of the city's at-risk youth, adults, and families. Support efforts to develop, sustain, and coordinate comprehensive, seamless system of services for the homeless citizens in order to move the homeless populations towards obtaining permanent supportive housing. Support efforts to remove barriers to escape poverty and strengthen low-income households and families. And again, Melva can answer any more questions or details that you want. Again, we can answer any question that you may have at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? There's the hearing piece next.
Yes.
So now it's individual speaking in favor.
It's sorry, they had mentioned that Mr. Wilder was going to share at the end. And so, but do we want to go to public comment, or would you like to share?
I was going to do it after.
Okay, that's great.
He's giving that amazing summary. We're so thankful that the community members were involved. They had several sets of stakeholders, the community members, that gave their input of what they wanted to see in our community. So I'm so thankful to Mel Walker and her team for enlisting the services of all our community members so they all had a voice, so you could hear what their concerns are. I mean, the CDBG funds that they have are so amazing. I worked on this program for over 20, about 25 years, and I'm always impressed with the housing need they're looking at our community for, for homelessness, for affordable income, for certain programs as well that they work on. The main thing I always love to see is where you work on homes for not just rental homes, but homes to own, some long-term sustainability, which increases the value of family, that their wealth that can be passed on to generations so it can break some cycles of poverty. So I think the work we're doing with this project is so amazing. I'm thankful to be a part of this. I'm thankful to hear what the stakeholders and the partners have to say. And that's another piece, is the partners, with from Rush Homes to Maryam's House, to, to all the organizations that partner with this project and the input they have and how they work so good together with the, with the, I can't think of the name, the committee, the homelessness. But that committee is just amazing work that they do here.
Ms. Timmer, you want to say anything? Yes, Timmer.
I'll defer my comments to questions until after the public hearing. But I generally reiterate Dr. Wilder's comments.
Is there anyone here who will speak in favor of this? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Are there any emails from voicemails from citizens?
No voicemails, there are none.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
A move for approval?
No, second.
Second.
Again, just to.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Just to reiterate everything again, we just appreciate this program. It's really making a difference in our community for the housing needs of our citizens, the homeless needs of our citizens that they can get more affordable housing. So again, we're thankful that we can partner in this project with our community and our community partners. Thank you.
Ms. Timmer?
Thank you. Yeah. For those that are not familiar, and a number of you are, come to the SEDAC hearings, but essentially it's discussing housing needs within the community as you can see from the goals that were listed. And one of the things that I've been very impressed with Melva's team on is their intentionality and how they structure the goals in order to obtain the most funding possible in the particular areas of need and, and to do it in a way that's appropriate. And I'm going to stop talking because I'm afraid I'm going to say something that I'm not supposed to say from a government perspective. And that can correct me. But they're just very intentional in how they go about that approach and making sure that they are putting the needs of the community first and, and doing it in a way that is amenable to those grant funding. So anyway, very much appreciate their time, and it's a privilege to serve with Dr. Wilder on the board.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. Feraldi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for implementation as it relates to a recent vote we took at our last meeting. We appropriated, I'll say 120, I think it was like $116,000 of, $120,000 out of a reserve account to essentially demolish private property in the city. I don't believe that's the proper role of government. It's why I voted against it in the concept. That being the case, C point number two, support efforts for the removal of redevelopment and redevelopment of dilapidated and condemned structures to eliminate neighborhood deterioration, blight, and blighting influences. Would that be an outcome? Would the vote and policy we took two week, a week ago be an outcome of a similar policy?
So I think the vote we took previously was, of course, using local funding. A national objective is to remove blight, so CDBG funding can be allocated for that. I will say that staff does have, and we could certainly get you this information, but there's, there's some inefficiencies in using federal dollars in that way unless there's a very targeted, unless there is a very targeted effort to pull that back. Just because the additional work tied to the federal funding.
Sure. With respect to the term that our manager has affectionately coined, their color of money is, is what? The color, the color of money is fungible, essentially? Even though it's federal, it's still passed through. I still have perspective on that. So I appreciate you enlightening us regardless of where the money is coming from. I think it's important to note that we're deciding what private property should be demolished or not. I think we should try to find other ways to incentivize those buildings coming down rather than us mandating it.
And what, Mr. Deemer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend your work as well. I have watched the CBDG funds be used successfully in this city for many, many years, going back to 91. I can remember even back then, some of the things that y'all did. And our city is definitely better for much of your activity. One of the things I really want to mirror what Dr. Wilder said is about homeownership and how important that is and all the efforts that you do that actually give people a home to own. And, and people who are often stuck in cycles of poverty get stuck in systems where they don't own anything and have nothing to pass on to their children. But in reality, I inherited a home from my parents. I hope my kids will inherit a home from me. And I can think of no better way to build generational wealth than to, to pay a mortgage and to pay into something you own that grows in value, as we know from the assessments. It's going up 30% for a lot of the people in Ward 3 where I represent. It is growing in value, and that is something that is wonderful. In some ways, it can be in higher taxes if we don't do the right thing, but it ultimately gives us something to pass on to the next generation. And I am very much in favor of that sort of thing because that's the way you end cycles of poverty and create cycles of wealth. So thank you for your work.
Is there any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Feraldi?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-1.
Next section is public comment. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City Council will listen to your comments and may ask the city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions. To make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking, there is no applauses, cheers, or jeers, no intimidation, insults, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote. Do not use profanity, promote business, or campaign for office. First item, hear from, hear from a citizen regarding DEI policy. And our DEI policies are legal. Please state your name.
Susan Stingle from Ward Three. Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm a resident of Ward Three and wanted to talk to you for a moment about DEI. A study by the S and P Global Market Intelligence has shown that the percentage of women in CEO and CFO positions in the United States, in U.S. publicly traded companies dropped in 2023 for the first time in two decades. Lawsuits against DEI policies and removal of them is likely the most important reason for this decline. I spent my career in U.S. publicly traded companies, where I was discriminated against because I was a woman as soon as I entered the workforce. In nineteen eighty, my boss would not promote me into management because I was married, and he assumed I could not travel. However, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission had my back, and I got that job. The EEOC is a federal agency that enforces laws that prohibit discrimination in the workplace. As long as it exists, the EEOC's purpose is to promote equal opportunity in employment. It has recently been taken over by the White House, and I suspect those protections will soon disappear. Hiring managers are more comfortable hiring people who are like them. Diversity in the workplace has been shown to be an effective way to increase creativity and productivity. A diverse workforce can deter groupthink by people with the same backgrounds and life experiences. DEI policies exist to make sure that every kind of person is given an equal opportunity for employment and promotion based on their merit. Properly implemented DEI policies do not contain quotas. Hiring practices based on merit are enhanced by DEI policies. DEI policies do not cause discrimination. Should an employee just, uh, experience illegal discrimination, that person can file a complaint with the EEOC after other local remedies have been exhausted. I encourage this council to look around at the people on the street, in these meetings, your workplace, and at your church, and think about how DEI policies and anti-discrimination laws already in place have positively affected the people you see. Each one of those people deserves a right to work hard, get the job and promotion they deserve. I encourage this council to continue to support DEI in the city of Lynchburg government and public schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, hear from a citizen regard, regarding misconduct of our Ward One School Board representative, Mr. Christian DePaul, Megan Huffman.
Can I go on, sorry?
Please state your name and locality, please.
Good evening. Um, I apologize, I have laryngitis from my children, so forgive me, I'm gonna lean in a little bit, but, um, I, I am a resident of Ward One, Megan Huffman. Therefore, my LCS school board representative is Mr. Christian DePaul, and my city council representative is Mrs. Jacqueline Timmer. I'm here this evening as a concerned, angry, and disappointed citizen for the negligent way that the DePaul misconduct was handled. I attended the special called meeting on February sixth and was certain that you, our city council, would unanimously request the resignation of Christian DePaul after he vandalized school property, erased the image of the first black female superintendent, and bullied our current interim superintendent with an image that mocked a character with a cognitive and physical disability. These acts basically violated the majority of the school board's nondiscrimination policy and their code of conduct. I have copies here, if you'd like me to leave them with you, I won't take time reading it today. Additionally, your LCS standards of conduct for employees indicates that staff shall not engage the following activities, and if so, could be considered for termination: use, using obscene or profane pictures, objects, or images, unauthorized use of, misuse or theft, or removal of school division property, threatening, harassing, and intimidating staff, discrimination, acting in an unprofessional manner in any dealings with students, parents, community members, or employees while on the job. All of those were violated. I have a copy of that as well, if you'd like me to leave that for you. As a Lynchburg resident, voting constituent, and a parent of two LCS students, I ask that this city council revisit the abrupt delay and dismissal of this issue, cast the vote with all members present, and ask for Mr. Paul's resignation. Additionally, an appropriate disciplinary action would be to require Mr. DePaul to visit our schools, to hold assemblies on discrimination, bullying, and mocking, and address how juvenile actions and poor judgment can ruin one's reputation, their respect in the community, and their status on the school board. It would be a great learning opportunity for our students. It's time for the school board and the city council to stop playing pranks, meddling in lawsuits, online bullying, and infighting, and take your job seriously as you steer the ship for our youngest and most vulnerable city residents. That's the only way we're gonna draw a respectable superintendent to this, this city. As Dr. Copeland said last week at the joint meeting, if your school division fails, your city will ultimately fail. School Board Chair Gupta said, "Schools have been left out, talk is cheap, the time for action was yesterday." You're putting it on people who are powerless. The number of students we have are, with IEPs are a thousand. We are looking for a shared contribution for a growing community. I heard Councilman Deemer say, "I understand the public contract that we have to provide a free education to people." And Councilman Missions, I heard you say, "Our schools need our support." I agree with you both. Let your vote, follow your words, and vote for the five-point-five million dollar request that is needed for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from citizen regarding appreciation and recognition of, recognition of two specific departments, Dr. Beth White.
Beth, I'm so sorry. I'll leave you there. Here we go. Straight down?
Please state your name and address.
Dr. Beth White, Ward Three. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I've already emailed the directors of the two departments I'm referencing tonight, but I wanted to repeat my words, not only in the hearing of Mr. Bendah, who does not know what I'm about to say, but also to this august body. And I'm glad that Ms. Hart is here. I actually, tonight was the first time I had meeting her, because her department is the first one I wanted to speak on. First, I wish to commend Gaynell Hart in the Public Works Department. In recent weeks, as you know, we've had some rather cold and challenging weather. The men and women of Public Works often have a thankless job that too many times is taken for granted. Indeed, we would probably only notice that they weren't doing their job when trash is not picked up, brush and bulk are left on the streets for months on end, when roads are not cleared after snowstorms, and so many other tasks that I haven't even mentioned. Crews are often called upon to work twelve-hour shifts just to keep our streets safe. None of the things that make our city so amazing would happen if it was not first for the teamwork and dedication that our Public Works folks display on a daily, albeit behind-the-scenes basis. Said all of those men and women in Public Works. Thank you. The second is to a team that has a special place in my heart, and it is because I've done a similar job to what they do. When I first met Donna Witt, our CFO, I like the colors you're wearing tonight, by the way. She was working at LU nearly twenty-seven years ago, dealing with the treasurer's office. For that reason, I wanted to also give a shout out to the men and women in our finance office. For hours on end, they crunch numbers that would make normal people's eyes bug out. Let's not even talk about spreadsheets. If you manage your own personal budget, that's one thing, but try dealing with numbers that have so many zeros on the end, it would make your head spin. Anytime that you deal with money, you're always gonna make someone upset. I know, because I spent three years working collections at Liberty University, and I was called everything but a child to God from people who were seminary students. Just for, just for, just for two people that I know of, in her office alone, there is more than sixty years of combined experience. These folks know what they're doing when it comes to finances and managing this city's money. Last week, I was dumbstruck as to how or why some folks of council who have less than four years of experience were trying to tell the CFO with more than thirty years of experience how to do her job better. That's like ta, telling Mayor Taylor that she know better than him on how to do construction or regarding blighted property when he has thirty years of experience. Oh, wait, we already did that. A former councilman was lauded for his years of experience with finance, and he had just twenty years. CFO Witt has over thirty years, so why does she and her staff get treated as if they're like Sergeant Schultz and know nothing? I'm asking this council to treat our city staff, who have spent decades doing their jobs, with the respect that their experience deserves.
Thank you. We're now here from a group representative regarding school board and other issues. Greg Berry, city elders.
Good evening to Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and other council members. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, my name is Greg Berry, and I'm a resident of Ward Three, and tonight I'm representing city elders. And I want to say first, to God and His Son Jesus Christ, be all the glory and honor.
Amen.
Uh, I want to start by saying thank you for your brave decision a month ago to, uh, vote on the, um, curfew for juveniles. Thank you for that. I think that was very necessary, and I appreciate that. Uh, the second issue, I've got a few issues here, but I'm gonna try, go through them quickly. Uh, I'm bringing before you an issue about your, uh, consideration. I do not feel it was necessary for you to be involved with this, and it was in reference to the school board. While I readily admit that a school board member did make a mistake, I also recognize that we need to be correcting and then forgiving. John, Chapter Eight in the Bible spoke very clearly of a situation that was brought before Jesus by the Pharisees. The Pharisees had one purpose, to try to discredit Jesus. This issue was brought to this board to try to diminish you. What happened there was very simple. The woman was guilty of adultery, but the Pharisees weren't concerned with justice, they weren't concerned with mercy. They were concerned with destroying the law and disrupting the system. I think that, uh, we need to look at the people who were complaining the most. One gentleman came up here and was, uh, complaining, saying if it had been me, 'cause I'm black, it would have been all kinds of grief. Well, the reality is, that individual is the convicted felon. He has been forgiven. The same forgiveness that he received from our community, he, he was gonna refuse to a person of another race. That is racist to me. We need to get over that, and we need to start being more forgiving. There was also a pastor who did the same thing. A pastor who came up here and wants to destroy somebody. Instead of, what is a pastor supposed to do? Offer forgiveness and reconciliation. That was totally wrong, in my opinion. We also need to think about the next topic, which is city budget, and listening to supposed ex, experts. I have been informed that the city provides funding for the Downtown Lynchburg Alliance. I am demanding that that funding stop immediately. This organization promotes many LBGTQ events, which is directly opposed to the, the God of the Bible and the majority of Lynchburg citizens. That is not how taxpayer dollars should be spent, no matter how many people cry about it. This is an abomination before God and cannot be funded by public dollars. Real estate assessments are rising, some are as much by thirty percent. This is absolutely insane. Do you live in a bubble that you do not realize that the majority of Lynchburg citizens are suffering economically as a result of the Biden administration?
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. Mr. Mayor, there's no way that that was real, the coughing from the crowd that was intentionally trying to drown out this gentleman here. I don't appreciate the disrespect coming from the gallery for this man during his time. I, I hope his time is reset and that he can finish his comments uninterrupted.
Please do not disturb speakers, okay? If you deter, start again, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave, because we gotta respect one another. Could you give him another minute?
I did pause his time, uh, when my order was given, so.
Okay, that's good.
Then I'll go and resume.
Continue, Mr. Berry. Sorry about that.
Yes, uh, as I said, the real estate assessments are rising, and some as much as by thirty percent, and this is absolutely insane for the city, considering the economics that we're dealing with. There is the request for an increase in the city budget. Many citizens don't really have a problem paying their fair share as long as they get a fair return on their investment. Your job as city council is to ensure that we are getting our money's worth. Listening to the administrators and experts is merely abdicating your responsibility to ensure our money is being spent wisely. This brings up the necessary question, why was there been no audit of city finances for several years? This, in my opinion, is criminal and must be rectified. City council should have, uh, take a lesson from President Trump and create its own Doge to ensure the wise use of funds.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll hear from citizen regarding ideas for generating revenue, Peter Sepharati. Could you please state your name, name and locality, please?
As the mayor said, my name is Peter Sepharati, and I'm in, uh, Ward One, and I'm served by an awesome new member of this body. Uh, good evening, folks. Uh, we're in the budget season, a season of hope and fear and finger-pointing and condemnations and righteous indignation, it happens every year. No one enjoys this process, I'm sure you folks don't. I'm hearing rumors of a twelve-million-dollar property tax increase. Some are pushing a fifty-to-sixty-million-dollar new school. We need dozens of HVAC units in the schools, also plumbing and electrical upgrades and mold remediation. Uh, real estate values are way up again, so homeowners could be looking at major tax increases. And, uh, of course, the teachers need raises, too. Ever since last week's joint city council, school board meeting, I have been thinking about funding sources for all of our new needs. I didn't hear, um, any new ideas at the meeting, but I, I do mention that I was pleased to hear Councilman Missions share some ideas about merging comparable departments in the city and in the schools that could save major dollars, and I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, you folks are exploring the possibilities for that. I don't have any specific ideas for alternative funding sources tonight, because frankly, I didn't think you would seriously consider my ideas, but I would ask you to put together an idea outreach to the citizens of Lynchburg. There's some pretty smart folks here in this town, and some really good funding ideas might be proposed if they were encouraged to apply the brain power. How about soliciting ideas and offering to pay a consulting fee to folks who submit workable plans that actually raise funds for the city, say, one or two percent of the funds raised? Now, that would be a bargain. I'm asking you to think differently to get better ideas. On another note, I see from the agenda that some folks are still outraged that a school board member taped a cartoon over some Big Shot's photo in some hallway. There's been a lot to say about a resignation. We all know that Lynchburg public schools have been producing too many uneducated graduates who can't read or write or do math, basic math to enhance the quality of their lives. This is leading to crime, to prison, and early deaths, and the schools have been on this trajectory for decades, I understand. The outrageous prank did nothing to cause the decline of our education system. If you're going to ask for resignations, please take a look at the people who are developing and implementing policies and procedures which cripple our schools. Please ignore the political games being played now. They only serve to distract decision-makers like this body from the real issues. I thank you for your attention. Citizens really appreciate being able to speak to you, and, uh, I'm available to talk with any of you who would like to explore alternative revenue sources, if you'd like. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're now here from a group representative regarding management policy concerning taxpayer funds.
Can I approach for one second?
No, sir.
Well, I just tell you right away, I think I appreciate a council member trying to intimidate me after I had my say.
It did happen.
Mr. Frawley approached me and tried to intimidate me, and I will not tolerate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to point order on this. I actually have a point order.
I'm going to ask the deputy city manager, since Mr. Bendah just walked out. Can we find the appropriate closed-session item to make sure that this gets addressed in closed session on a future agenda?
I don't think people are calling up.
I have people who are gay and abomination in front of their face.
I have the floor, Mr. Frawley.
I don't care. That's wrong. And I just walked by and simply said, "That was uncalled for." If he thinks that's wrong, let him have it.
I have the floor.
All right. Just because you're gay doesn't mean you're abomination.
I have the floor. I'm asking for a future agenda item to have exactly what Mr. Berry just addressed, placed on the appropriate closed session. So if you can just make note of that?
Yes, sir.
That's my request on the agenda item. I don't know what it is. You're going to have to confer with the city attorney on that, but this needs to be addressed in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, sir.
Before I begin, as always, I like to express my gratitude to city council and their staff, because I know you're here at great personal and professional sacrifice. I just want to appreciate that. I'm John Vassar from Bellevue. Oh, by the way, Mayor, I interrupted you.
Did you? No, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I'm John Vassar from Bellevue. We call it the poor man's Boonsborough, and also the ever-popular Lynchburg Republican City Committee. There are decades which pass where little happens. We are living in a time where months, weeks, and days pass, where entire decades' worth of events happen. This is currently one of those times when we travel through the outer limits into the Twilight Zone while watching an episode of Black Mirror. As the upcoming bipartisan socio-economic turmoil will most certainly affect our community, I wish to discuss some financial policy issues that date back to Republican President Ulysses S. Grant, and maybe, and maybe, excuse me, may be relevant to our city today. Respectfully, consider this just an oversimplification and a friendly reminder from the old professor of a time-destined idea. So if I'm a bit botanic, forgive me. We want you to consider estimating total city revenues and creating a working figure of available financial resources to service city expenditures. Compile a separate list of all estimated city expenditures and arrange them according to priority, from most essential to less essential. Make the process transparent, available to all interested citizens is most important part, for review and comment. That way stakeholders do not feel ignored or left out. This process has been used successfully in the public and private sectors and does not require sophisticated knowledge of budgeting, making it accessible to all stakeholders. I'd also like to know I proposed similar things in my consulting practice to U.S. Steel and governments in West Virginia. All right. Allows our government, this allows our government to publicly share in the budgeting processes of our citizens. In other words, the way our citizens manage their personal finances, it's like, it's accessible in the fact that shows that the citizens, how they manage their money, and that's how the city manages money. It stops wasteful spending on so-called vanity projects in favor of more productive investments, i.e. like something like I've been talking about for years, a year-round civic center versus dangerous cobblestone streets, impractical outdoor venues, et cetera. I love the cobblestone streets. My wife and I like to walk across them, and we look like a couple in an MGM musical, trying to get across the street. It's wonderful. And I got any moment, I expect Sammy Hayes Jr. to come out and start dancing with the two of us, okay? It assures that first responders and critical infrastructure projects are fully funded to ensure our economic and physical survival. It allows the city to manage our debt, so it supports economically productive activities. That is called productive debt. Good publicity for Lynchburg. Lynchburg needs good publicity. It could get us national publicity. Gives us a Sterling credit rating and red carpet service from the financial community. Been there, done that, and I'm wearing the T-shirt. We can easily abandon this practice. It does not work out. To quote Democrat President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, "Circumstances require that we enter into a time of bold and persistent experimentation, embracing what works and abandoning that which does not work." And I thank you for your attention, and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I'm John Vassar.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Then we hear from citizen regarding agenda issues. Andrea Hurt. Okay, Ms. Hurt is not here. We're here from citizen regarding financial management policy. Joshua Pratt. Could you state your name and locality, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. My name is Joshua Daniel Pratt. I'm a resident of Ward 33. Here we are once again in budget season, and again, the bureaucracy is salivating to spend more of our money. I'm asking the question of, where has it already gone? The schools are failing, the city poverty level has increased, and the past 25 years of leftist agenda has made the city no better. I'm calling for a full and complete audit of all members of city council, all departments of city government, and all organizations, including nonprofits, that receive any taxpayer money. This includes, but is not limited to, the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia, the Jubilee Center, the Downtown Lynchburg Association, the Academy of Arts, the Beacon of Hope. The days of Mary Jane Dolan and Joan Foster are over. Today is the day Lynchburg City must clean up the waste, fraud, and abuse of taxpayers' money. Today, for example, I discovered that here in city council, there are members concealing their involvement in nonprofit boards while involved in budgeting and financial matters of the city. Today in the Budget and Finance Committee, Chairman Missions asked the committee members the following question. Is there any disclosure that needs to be made about taxpayer funds going to any nonprofits for anybody on this committee? Dr. Sterling Wild answered, "Oh, no, not I. I don't get anything, I mean." Council Reed, Councilwoman Reed said no, and made no declaration of any board affiliation. Question, are any members of city council on any nonprofit boards? The answer is yes. Both Dr. Wilder and Stephanie Reed are. Dr. Wilder serves as the executive director of the Jubilee Family Development Center, and Stephanie Reed was recently named CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Virginia. So why are they concealing this direct involvement in nonprofits in an open meeting? These tax documents right here, available to the media, are the Form 990s of both the Boys Club and the Family Development Center. We, the people, want transparency, accountability, and to stop the waste, fraud, and abuse. We are calling for a complete audit of the entire city budget. We're calling for complete transparency of who gets what and how much. We're calling for a complete accountability of anyone who has violated the law or the people's trust. It's time for Lynchburg to stop the waste, fraud, and abuse.
Thank you. Our next section is general business.
You left your hat, sir.
Sure.
Left your hat.
General business. It includes new items for discussion. Consideration of adopting a resolution to increase lane mileage for street maintenance entitlement fund from the Commonwealth. This item went to Physical Development Committee last Tuesday. I will defer to the chairman of their committee, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, this is just being able to capture more state funding when it comes to road maintenance, and it passed unanimously in PDC. I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second, King.
No need for a second.
No need for a second. Is there any discussion?
No discussion? Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Frawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the FY 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriating $75,000 to fund equipment for the fire department technical rescue team. This item went to Finance Committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chairman of their committee, Ms. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, we unanimously adopted this resolution recommendation to appropriate $75,000 from the city, federal, state aid fund budget for the, from the 2024 State Homeland Security Program grant. It's 100% reimbursable. There's no local match required. And if you don't know what our technical rescue team is, you should, because these guys recently just went down to southwest Virginia with flooding, and they do a lot of really neat stuff, swiftwater rescue, things like that, and they're a deployable team. So when duty calls, not just in Lynchburg, they answer the call and they go, and they put themselves in harm's way for our fellow Virginians. And I appreciate the service that they do. This passed unanimously. With that, unless, Chief, do you have anything to add?
No.
I'll make a motion that we adopt this.
Is there any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Frawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending FY 2025 fleet fund budget appropriating $2,400,000 to purchase a ladder truck for fire station number nine. This item went to Finance Committee earlier today, and I would defer to the chairman of their committee, Ms. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, we had come before us a resolution to amend the FY 2025 fleet fund budget to appropriate 2.4 million with resources from the fleet fund, unassigned fund balance, to purchase a tiller ladder truck for the new fire station. This money was previously appropriated by council, I think January 2024, and if there's anything else that Ms. Witt needs to add, is there anything else you need to add to this?
Just that by doing so, prepaying for the ladder truck, it's going to result in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And that's why I was deferring to you guys, to add something else to it. So we're saving money, right, by appropriating these funds today to purchase this ladder truck, and the sooner we do it, the better, because the price on these things just keeps going up and up and up and up. And I think it was, what, 50? How many months was the build time on this?
51.
51 months, so over four years to purchase and build one of these things. It's incredible. With that, I make a motion.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Missions does a very good job of that. I just wanted to point out Chuck, who takes care of our fleet, brought in many of these service vehicles, public safety, and that he has technicians that help with it. To his left is the fire chief, and that these apparatus are no small things to maintain. And so I just want to make sure as we're giving out quite a bit of flowers, I think that's how the kids say it, this evening, flowers should be also extended to our fleet department. And so I know that you do that.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, fleet is one of the best-run operations we have in the city. They do a fantastic job.
No small, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. There's no more discussion? Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Frawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you all. Our next meeting will be?
March 11th at 4:00 p.m. on the second floor training room.
Praise God. Thank you.